First one is from Central Paving in Loganport. Here's that their grand total. One million, forty thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. One zero, four zero, four, three, 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 six. Second one is from EB Paving in Rochester. It appears that their bid total is one million, two hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-six. One, two, two, zero, seven, two, seven point two. Third bid is from Town and Country in Demont, Indiana. Appears that their bid is one million, two hundred and nine thousand, forty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. One, two, zero, nine, zero, four, two, point, six, two. Gary, you'll take these back and make sure everything's in line and have a recommendation the next meeting?
Yes, we will take them back and do advisement, then we have to go through, uh, send our paperwork into the state. Get the process, grant started. Uh, the other thing I wanted to ask if we're supposed to start our four tens on, uh, basically the pay period starts May twenty-fifth, which is Sunday. I was wondering if we could move it up two weeks to start the pay period of May eleventh, which our first day of work would be May twelfth. Give us four tens, give us, uh, longer work hours, uh, with a lot of things that we gotta get going, road projects. Wanted to ask the commissioners for their blessing. If not, I totally understand.
Good with that? Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve moving the work up to, you said, the tenth? May tenth?
Uh, May eleventh.
May.
Monday is the twelfth will be our first day. The pay period is May eleventh.
All right.
Pay period.
To Monday, May eleventh, May twelfth start period?
Yes.
Thank you.
Awesome. We have a motion and second to move the four-day, ten-hour work week up to May the eleventh. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Thank you, unless you have any questions, bring.
Oh, thank you, Gary. Do you need these or you going?
Yeah, just leave them there and I'll, Dave and I'll take them back. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Teresa?
Yes, good morning. Um, I come before you today. Um, we have a company that is called True Roll Systems. And what they do is, um, they actually go through our property tax system to see if there is a possibility that there are people that are unfortunately receiving more than one homestead, which is state mandated that you only have one, um, in the, uh, in the entire country. So, um, unfortunately, we've come to find out that we've got people with ones down in Florida and maybe one up here, and you can't have that. It's not fair to the rest of us that actually abide by the rules. So what this company will do is go through our system and do pretty much an audit to see, make sure that they don't have homesteads somewhere else. Um, there's two different ways to do it. Um, one will not cost us unless they find something, then they get thirty percent of what they collect. Um, the other one is actually, uh, it charges us so much per year. We would like to get it started as far as, um, having them look at our system, see if they find anything and get us kind of on a more straight and narrow as far as that goes. Um, they have more access to things that than we do, um, voting, not necessarily voting records, but, um, they can go countrywide. Where we can only look at a statewide system. Um, so to do the second phase, which would be where they do all the work, it's like twenty-three thousand a year. Um, which is kind of salty, especially in this time crunch, money crunch era we're living in, unfortunately. So we would like the permission from the commissioners to at least start the, uh, do the, uh, they call the full contingency audit where they go through. And if they find anything, then they get a portion of what they, a thirty percent portion of what, of what they find. Um, it does, it, cause then we get it back to us, so they only get thirty percent of that. We wouldn't have to come up with any money upfront. Now, if that's something that, um, I had sent this to you folks, um, previously, I didn't know if it was something that you're interested in or if, um...
Did, did they seek you out for this or are you feeling like we're missing a lot of money?
They're, well, um, they really didn't reach out to us. A lot of the other counties were saying that they had been through these folks. And, um, and I talked with Stark County as well as Porter County. Of course, Porter County is bigger county. They're gonna find a lot more stuff like that than, than Stark would, but Stark, he couldn't say enough good things about it. Um, because of... It's just a good thing, that's for sure. I mean, you know, if we don't find any, we don't owe anything, you know? We just wanna keep everything straight and fair for everybody.
So, people.
Right, pretty much, yeah. I can't have a house down in Florida as well as mine, one of, that's.
Right.
I mean.
And there's no tie to this? If you go through the first step with the thirty percent, there's no tie after that, so we can either decide we don't wanna go with it in the future? Or it was beneficial enough financially that we would pursue it again at the twenty-three thousand a year, correct? That would be the next?
That is.
I think it'd be beneficial. I think that, uh, the... They don't find nothing, don't cost us.
I agree. I agree.
I'll make a motion to let Teresa go ahead. Good.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to allow Teresa Bryant to continue with, uh, True Roll Systems with the thirty percent collection. They find nothing, we owe nothing, see how it goes the first year. Any discussion? Big none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Jenny?
Okay. Um, several months ago, as commissioners, we discussed moratoriums for renewable energy projects that we know are coming to Plaski County, especially for battery energy storage and commercial solar. Um, the majority of us stated we're in favor of the moratoriums, but since then, we've had many decisions made by various other boards that appear to be either stalling or impeding the process, uh, for which the APC is designed. And that's concerning to me as a commissioner because we oversee the AP, or we oversee the building inspector who oversees the area plan commission. And I feel like we're at a point right now where we need some advice and some guidance, um, from council, from Jacob on what we can do, um, as leaders of Plaski County to, to try and alleviate some of this and so that the, um, building inspector and area plan commission can commence with the duties that they are, um, tasked with doing for the county. Uh, just a couple of things, and then I'm gonna turn it over to you, Jacob, and, and Carla, I'm just, you know, gonna ask you as well. Um, we know that Carla, building inspector, has been seeking out an attorney. Um, she did have one lined up. She was actually gonna go with Jacob for the APC, um, but she was denied, uh, to hire him by county council, as well as denied the, um, money to be able to, uh, hire an attorney. Um, Carla, can you, do you mind coming to the mic and just giving us an update on where you are currently with finding an attorney and where you are, what your thoughts are on money for that attorney?
Well, regardless what attorney we use, we need an attorney. The board has been hindered to be able to do things properly without guidance from legal counsel. Um, Jacob had recommended somebody that we've started to become in contact with. I've tried to reach out to a couple others that in the past had been considered. A lot of them don't want to deal with government or, um, or they're, they're just too busy. Um, some are pretty far away, uh, in regards to driving this far, but, um, though the gentleman that Jacob had recommended, like I said, we've been speaking and I have two others, so I'm going to do what I did in the past to the APC is bring the names with their, um, bios and fees and whatnot to plan commission. And then hopefully, um, we'll all have to go to council prior to our next APC meeting to ask for an additional, again, for an attorney, because again, not having one, I'm not comfortable doing half of the things the board's supposed to do because we don't have legal guidance.
Thank you. You just, just stay there for a minute if you would. Is there an opportunity, Jacob, for Carla to use funds from another account she has? I'm just, I'm looking down the road. In the event that council denies again her money to hire an attorney, what other avenues does Carla have to get representation?
Okay, I think that's better. Um, my understanding, and if, if I'm incorrect, you can tell me, is that I, I think there's a thousand dollars that are earmarked for legal counsel at this point. Um, I realize, i- is that correct?
Yes.
And so I, I realize that's going to cover very little work. Um, you know, the, the council is the fiscal body of the county, and so if there are appropriations requests made, the council's the one that controls that. Now, if, uh, APC has projects, they have that thousand dollars they can use. If they're going to go above that, they're going to have to request it. Now, if, if the commissioners approve, um, or I'm sorry, not commissioners, if the APC makes a selection on an attorney, uh, you know, when I had con, when I had contact with the APC regarding this issue, um, I had asked for a, I believe it was like a six thousand dollar retainer or something like that. Um, so if, if council approves that, then that's, that's the main way. The other way would be if, uh, the APC hired an attorney on a contractual basis, um, and then that would go through the claims process. My understanding, and I realize that this is not a council meeting, but the issue was more of not, not that the council was against hiring an attorney, it was just the issue of the fact that they felt that there was a conflict that of interest of given the fact that I represent the commissioners and that some of these issues may have, um, adversarial proceedings between the APC and the commissioners. And so I, I'm not a member of the councils. I'll let the council speak for themselves, but my, my feeling is as if another attorney was put forward, they would probably be inclined to litter that. Um, but really, because the council controls the purse strings, I, it's really up to the council to approve that funding short of the APC hiring a lawyer on a contractual basis and going through the claims process for that. But, um, you know, there's, I guess there's a reason for that checks and balance process and, and, um, but I, I really think it, it kind of, the funding part of it starts and stops with the council.
Okay. So contractually, if, if you're denied again, then she could go through, uh, contractually and, and have those claims approved by council?
She's going, they would have to go through the claims process for that. Um, now, the issue is, is they can be approved, but if council doesn't appropriate the money, um, you're kind of back to square one. And so I, I would look, uh, I would look for the county council to comment on this, but it is really my belief that with a, with new council being appro, approached, this issue should be remedied. I really, I really think the issue was more of the concern, and even before my involvement with the county, um, there were concerns about having one attorney wearing multiple hats, which is understandable. And so I think by bringing in different council, this issue should be resolved.
Okay.
If it's not, then I guess we'll address that when that comes, but I, I feel like that's the case.
Okay. Um, the second part of this, uh, APC meetings I've requested from Carla and from Nathan, all of the APC meetings that have been held since twenty-twenty. And, um, I've received very little. I think I've got meetings from July twenty-twenty-four, November twenty-twenty-three, May twenty-twenty-three. Um, and I'm sure there are more, but there are no minutes yet for me to get. Nathan, do you have, or are, are those out there for me to retrieve anywhere?
Up through twenty. Up through twenty-twenty-two are on the current website. Um, twenty-three, twenty-four are not on the website.
Okay, so I, when I've asked, I've only received three, uh, minutes from three meetings all the way back to twenty-twenty-two is what I'm, and I'll just leave it at that. So this is problematic to me. It's problematic. It should be problematic for the county that we don't have minutes from these meetings that we can access. Um, you're, I know, and I know you hold your meetings, Carla, every other month, right?
Right, and if we don't have any new or old business, then the board chooses to just not hold the meeting.
Correct.
So that's why we won't have meetings for some, some months.
Have, have you ever, Carla, had meetings monthly? And, and here's, here's why I'm asking. Because it, it has been difficult to get a quorum, which was the issue at the last meeting. Is it possible, instead of waiting a month and a half for a meeting, and then that meeting doesn't come to fruition, that meetings could be scheduled monthly, can also be canceled, but it gives you the opportunity to hold and to, you know, increase the chances of getting everybody together to make these decisions. Is that an option, Jacob, you can respond to?
I, I mean, I, I don't think there's an issue with that. Um, from a legal standpoint, if the APC wants to have a monthly meeting, I don't, there's anything in statute that prevents that from happening. I, I think most counties and most municipalities that I've dealt with, whether it's a city or a town, and there's a BZA or somewhere, an APC, generally just to not waste people's time, they, they won't set a meeting unless there's an issue because people don't wanna show up to say, hey, we don't have anything and go home, but if, if you wanted to do that, you could, and then you could cancel it if, if there are no issues. Um, I think from a legal standpoint, you could do that in theory.
So our rules of procedure were based off of Indiana code, and Indiana code has changed a bit, and therefore our rules of procedure need updated. They can't be updated because we don't have an attorney. So presently, rules of procedure do read that they're bi-monthly. Um, I think maybe you may know this. Once upon a time, a few years ago, Indiana code would, would state how often you would have the meetings, but I, it's, like I said, Indiana code has changed so much, so until we had an attorney to help us alter our rules of procedure, then I would just need to keep scheduling special sessions.
And, and my memory of that statute is that the, the by, or every other month is kind of the default setting, but I believe there's a provision under that statute that also says that the, the local municipality can adopt, um, an ordinance that i- is curtailed to their specific needs if they need to. Um, and so I, I think that the every other meeting is, is the statutory default language that's in place unless the local municipality, um, creates its own policy that says otherwise.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, the, and we spoke, Carla, about this as well. Um, when it comes to alternates, um, we have three alternates currently for the APC who appear to have potential direct conflicts of interest. This as well is going to continue to impede the process of the APC meeting and making decisions and having votes on important topics. Um, and, and Carla, I know you spoke and you said there are two, there are two conflicting sections that one says an APC member can only fill in for that specific spot, and then in another, can you explain that a little bit? And Jacob, maybe you can help us make sense of this.
So there are two sections in Indiana code that do discuss alternates, and one just basically states an alternate is selected by your, your board or the fiscal board, um, APC selects a BZA alternate, BZA selects an APC alternate, vice versa. Anyway, so then there was, again, at one point somewhere in Indiana, Indiana code where it would read an alternate. If it was a commissioner alternate, they can only fill in seat for the commissioner, um, appointed board member. But then there's another section that reads that alternates are only for any board members that have a conflict of interest. So Jacob and I had talked briefly about it, and it, it's confusing to me because it doesn't say you can't be an alternate for an absent board member, but the other section says the alternate is only for conflict.
That is correct, and, and there is a lot of, I guess, it's not a very clear area of the code. Um, my understanding, and I think Carla is correct, that i- if a member is gone because of a personal issue or somebody's on vacation or something like that, um, the, the alternates are not designed or intended to fill in for those, for those appointments. What they're designed for is in the event that a sitting member of the APC has a conflict of interest, then the alternate could step in for the purpose of that vote on that issue. And then once that issue is resolved, then the original standing board member would continue on for any other matters. Um, and so I, i- it's my understanding, and when I met with Mr. Tankersley prior to twenty-twenty-five to talk about this position, it's my understanding that probably the biggest issue in the past has been just getting a quorum, um, more than anything else. And so, um, th- those alternates are generally there to, uh, address the issue of conflicts. It's not, hey, my kid's sick and I have to stay home tonight, and so now we have to use alternate.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, those alternates can only be used in place of conflict of interest, correct?
That's, that's, and, and there's, and I will admit with Carla, and I, and I'm, I'm a, a member of a municipal attorney listserv, and I often see very frustrated emails on this topic because the code is, is conflicting in spots, and, and there are several interpretations as to how that's supposed to be addressed, but that's, that's the position. I think there's case law out there that speaks to that as well.
Can you help then if we have, if we have an issue, uh, that's being discussed by the APC, and we have a person with a conflict of interest, but all three alternates also have potential conflicts of interest? What can we do at that point?
Well, I, I think at that point, the, the board, and I guess this is for your APC attorney to, to address. I know that, that, that's probably the biggest issue that needs to be addressed, but once that is addressed, there, they would have to go through the statutory process of appointing an additional, um, alternate, i- if the alternates are also not able to serve due to a conflict. And I don't, I don't know if these people have conflicts. I don't know if there have been disclosures done or anything like that, but for purposes of that argument, that's what you would have to do.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does that help clear that up a little bit, Carla, for you as well?
Yeah, and, yeah, we need an attorney. That's.
Yeah, yeah, bottom line is, we need an attorney, yeah.
Carla, do you have copies?
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, um, Jenny and I had spoken. I am, I am not smart enough to zip up all my files in one email, so I have to send her several of, several emails of our meeting minutes.
But to date, I have not gotten those correct.
Um, I have a, I, my email.
Okay, I was gonna say, if, if you've sent them, I have not received them.
You're gonna get several.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you. Um, that, that helps me on that, so anything else, Carla, from you? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
So Teresa has provided a regular session minutes from April the seventh, as well as executive session minutes from April the seventh. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April the seventh.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes with a regular meeting and executive session from April the seventh. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We've been provided the claims and payroll number eight. We have a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept payroll and claims number eight.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims of payroll number eight. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance two thousand twenty-five-nine, approval and administration policy for grants. Teresa, speak on this a little?
So, um, with the county, several of the county departments have been going through grants, uh, trying to help offset some of the, um, some of their budgets and some of the things they wanna do, such as Gary doing the community crossings this morning. Um, so I wanted to, a lot of the counties have a policy where everybody's kept, kept in the loop as far as the council commissioners and what's coming up as far as when it gets closer to budgeting time and things like that. So I had, um, uh, sent you folks a copy of the policy that I came up with. I actually derived it from my, uh, White County, um, as well. So, because they're comparable. Um, but I didn't know if that's something that you had a chance to look over and had any questions or?
I thought it was very well-written, outlines, um, procedures and be very helpful, I think, for you, as well as commissioners, council, what's going along, steps, or what, you will blindside it by, by something. Uh, not blindside it being not necessarily negative, but just knowing that it's coming. Any other comments?
No. I think it's a good idea.
We, we'd like to accept this. I'll make a motion to accept ordinance twenty-two five.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance, uh, two thousand twenty-five-nine, approval and administration policy for grants. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next is acceptable use policy amendment.
So what this is, last meeting, you had already accepted this and signed it, but to get it into our actual, uh, employee handbook, so that folks know this, it actually has to be an amendment. I did not realize that. Um, and it's the same amendment that you signed, it's just we have to have it in an open meeting, uh, to where, uh, uh, it can be put in the, uh, employee handbook, but everybody knows what.
I'll make a motion to accept the amendment for the acceptable use policy.
One sec. We both.
And we both. We'll go with you. We have a motion and a second to accept the amendment for the acceptable use policy. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have a conference request from the Health Department for Maria Roth to attend the Rise Up for Kids two thousand twenty-five in Carmel on April the twenty-fourth. We have a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the conference request for Marie Roth for Rise Up for Kids twenty-twenty-five.
We have a motion and a second to approve the conference request, Ms. Roth, to attend the Rise Up for Kids two thousand twenty-five conference on April twenty-fourth. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Discussion on National Opioid Action Coalition, I Heart Media.
So I had received this. Not sure if I sent it to you, and I'm sorry, and if, if, um, we can table this till next meeting, if I did not. Uh, this is a letter I received from the I Heart Media regarding, um, talks about, this letter finds you well. My name is Jennifer Cartwright. I'm writing to you on behalf of the I Heart Media to request funding for a critical initiative aimed at combating the opioid crisis. for a critical initiative aimed at combating the opioid crisis in Blasky County. Um, iHeart is co-founder of the National Opioid Action Coalition and I would like to work with you to develop an outreach campaign for your county. Talk about, um, uh, horse, opioid, uh, g- uh, I'm sorry, opioid epidemic continues to have a devastating impact on so many communities affecting countless lives and stream local resource. She is wanting to, um, to ensure the success of this initiative, we are seeking financial support from the commissioners for, and actually this is more maybe more a joint session to talk about with council. Um, they want to, um, to get more things out into the media like, um, radio stations, YouTube, um, digital display ads, things like that. I don't know if I, I, I'm not totally for sure I sent it to you. I may not have. And maybe we need to table this till a joint session.
Listening to this, I also believe that the, um, drug free council, this as well, here on that, and, uh, I think the drug free council should look at this as well as our health department. So.
I'm fine with that if we want to wait.
Okay.
And I'll send it on to Leanne as well.
Yes.
Foundation.
How much was it then?
It didn't really say an amount. They just asked for a donation.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is an update from VS. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right. So over the last two weeks, we received 14 public comments on the solar compliance monitoring, uh, of which some of these noted some wrong way violations on the road use map as well as or signage from those as well as our inspection report. We are issuing, we have issued a fine for $14,500 to the solar company. Uh, of note, some of these comments that were, we have received were unlawful violations. Us as compliance monitor, we can't do anything with that other than relay that to the sheriff. And so we've taken those and relayed that to him. So upon his routine, he can follow up. Some of those include ATV violations, uh, traffic stopping at stop signs, things similar to that nature. So he's aware and he'll be following up as necessary. And we want to provide enough here.
Oh, yeah. I think I copied each of you on the gentleman who requested the label for the fertilization process. So if you have any additional questions, the guy, the gentleman who provided that to me, uh, Carla and I met with him at the airport. He welcomed any of you to come talk with him if you would like. So I just wanted to let you know that. Otherwise, I think you've got a copy. It's multiple pages. Um, and then I've, I've retained a, a hard copy and electronic copy if anyone else needs it, or we can give it to Nathan and prompt that on the website.
Thanks.
So carrying further with our inspection report that we did within the last two weeks. Uh, some key items to note is we noted some silt fence issues. This is a violation of their SWIP documents, so it needs to be addressed in a timely fashion. Uh, other items were the signage, which we included in that violation notice that we sent out last week, as well as noted some roadway repairs are up and coming. However, they are not required at this time. So we'll continue to monitor with Gary's assistance as well to ensure the roadway isn't deteriorating. On that note, the developer has moved forward with hiring Town and Country and has received quotes and has approved them for repairs along 800 West as well as 600 South for repairs and improvements to both of those roads. So that work will get, be getting scheduled and into the books in the near future. Uh, they're also looking into doing additional intersection improvements through that, throughout the entire project. They independently took upon the engineering role and are analyzing what needs to be done in intersections. Upon that, upon completion of that review, they will be sending it to the county for confirmation that that's all that's necessary. Uh, other updates, the central map two has been reviewed and approved and executed. So this include, uh, additional roads as well as changing some of the road, roadways, uh, whether they're just in routes or both routes. So we met with the developer and the highway department last week to review it and come to some compromises on both areas so that we're able to capture as much as we can for the in route traffic. And so that by the end of the project, the amount of road repairs will encompass more. Another item I want to bring up is some upcoming construction activities that they have planned. Their, they started pilings on Friday. They will continue to do so over the next month. There's numerous of them that are needed, of which they have advised us that they plan to stop around five or six every night. They don't plan to continue this throughout the evening hours.
Weekend. Are they gonna do any of this o- over the weekend, Saturday, Sunday?
I will have to follow up. I don't think they advised on the weekend hours. I, if I was to guess, I would say yes. Uh, but I will confirm that.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, other items that they will continue is the driveway and roadways for their yards that they will continue to build as well as, uh, pourings for the conduits. So for the driveways and roadways, the signage needed for those, we're preparing exhibits. So it's clearly depicted as to what needs to be needed every time they're doing this. Uh, this includes the trucks entering and exiting at the roads prior to turning onto that road section as well as how their flagging operations need to be done in, in compliance Now those signage do not need to be out there and on, on a permanent basis, but as a, as they are performing the work, the signage needs to be up. So upon traveling the areas, if vehicles are starting to utilize an area, there should be signage in that area. That would be entering and exiting area, not just driving. So that is the conclusion of the Mammoth update. For May Apple, we had some interesting activities last week. Unfortunately, there was a fire incident that had occurred and the fire department was dispatched. We believe, we're still waiting on the official report from May Apple. However, it was, we are under the understanding it was a brush fire due to their pile testing that they were performing. They were cutting it and cutting the metal produced sparks which started a fire. They had seized all work until it is properly investigated and to our knowledge it has still not started up. Uh, we have a progress report later this week with another solar company. I believe that's Moss. And so that is where we are at over the last two.
Boss giving you an occasion?
Purpose. This is just a progress meeting, just to see where they're at with documents, track where things are trending and make sure all proper paperwork's in line. I don't believe they plan to start anytime in the year, meaning summer.
They've had an inch of hiking there. And I think they've been on that and at our last progress meeting, they're rabid.
I, I spoke with Chris a little bit earlier about this, but we've had, I've had calls on the ATVs, UTVs that they're using. And at the last, Tim, you were at the meeting with me Wednesday at the Mammoth Project meeting on South. Um, and they mentioned that they had all the sign, or they had gotten approval from the sheriff's department and Chris has said no for registering their ATVs or whatever they have to have on those ATVs. Um, can you speak to that a little bit as well? What, what requirements are needed for the UTVs, ATVs for their work?
Yeah. So for the UTVs, according to Blasky County ordinance, they need to be registered with the BMV as well as operating for a development with this being a development that checks that box. So they need to go to the BMV and make sure that those are registered. Uh, talking with the sheriff, that registration paperwork is a sticker that would then be applied to the vehicle. So we will continue to monitor that. However, I don't think there's a specific guidance as to location it needs to be applied. And again, that's a enforceable matter by the sheriff. So if we see something, we'll be sure to relay that.
Okay. Uh, did you follow up already with Casey, um, out there after that conversation?
Yeah. So he called me shortly after asking if that was a violation of the RUA and I provided him the guidance that for the RUA, he needs to follow the county ordinances of which this is where he can find that ordinance that states that it's a, it needs to be registered.
Okay. And then you also mentioned that there were some violations that you had forwarded on to the sheriff's department that you can't do anything about. Is that correct?
So yeah, so those included the stops. There was, uh, some public comments about vehicles not stopping at stop signs. Uh, I believe there was also the UTV one that we provided him, um, baby speeding.
Okay. Okay. And Chris, have you, how have you followed up with those? And do you have fines that you've issued through the sheriff's department in addition to?
All of us. I've heard. I stopped at your location. I've sat there. I've sat at the stop location. I caught a couple trucks. I saw your school last time. I mean, trucks on two there.
Mm-hmm.
I stopped on the opposite way. He said, grab a truck. It's a perfect place. He's right here. It makes one kind of go home. Just like, I said, I'm going to drive around everywhere. So I have stops, six or seven trucks. When the air is, I'm worried about it. It's five west, it's going north. It's a completely blind intersection. I sat there.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be an intersection. There's gonna be a lot of trucks going through there. Just to be possible. I heard that there was some, after the fact, there was a trailer that went through there. That's why I was like, why they went that way? I had to see that violation. I just have to see that violation to be able to enforce that. We need to be able to see the violation. Stop, sign, take it or whatever it is to enforce that. And we just got out there. I told the guys, we'll get out there as much as we can. Um, I expressed in the meetings that we need to have somebody full time, solar companies might do you a full time, whatever else they enforce these. Definitely in his car, whatever we need to do to be driving around and taking care of all these. Sometimes we have one person working. They do it the most, but they're busy.
Yeah. And now, I do have the pictures. Someone sent them to me. I would assume I had sent those to you. I'm sure someone has received those.
I did.
Yeah.
And I did, you know, and I told the guys, I was like, I radioed all the different folks.
Have you?
Road.
Yeah.
And I think your husband saw me.
Yeah, I saw you.
I know you didn't stop all the way. You kind of, the whole three second. I said, it's all the things.
Have you?
I haven't checked the stop sign yet. I don't think you might have looked at it. Yes, I got new places and stop signs. Great idea. What a great idea.
Mm-hmm.
I shouldn't have stopped.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Have you issued any tickets yet though, Chris?
I have. I don't know. As far as the four weeks ago, there was some communication someplace. They have to be ready. I heard you were afraid. I went talking to one person. I told him he said they have to reach a sticker on there. I'll call Casey right away. I don't know what this communication was, but they have to reach a sticker on there. So I'll make sure.
Right. Right. And I appreciate you following up because what, what we hear in some of these meetings, and I know Wednesday, yeah. Yeah. We're, so the communication is good because I think where they can get away with.
Yes.
Spending less money, they are going to get away with spending less money. So I appreciate.
Every day.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Chris, just for clarification, um, Indiana code prohibits the sheriff's department, any law enforcement agency issuing a citation for a, for a violation, running a stop sign, beating you, officer actually has to.
But, but, but you are seeing it. You, you've commented, you've seen it. We're just, you, you're just not issuing tickets yet. Yeah.
That's a temporary issue.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Five and one. Yeah. Yeah.
And the ordinance, Teresa, published it for this, this week because it's gotta be published twice before citation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nope. Thank you.
Something else I would like to point out is for our fines that we are issuing the developer, that we also require photo evidence so that we can, we have a backbone or a back leg to stand on. That way it's documented and it's shown the violation.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Teresa, you might know the answer. Where, where does the money go? The, these fines? We've got 14,500 that VS is issuing. Where will that money go? Into what?
So, um, according to our ordinance that I published, they, it will go in, it'll actually go in, but it'll be in its own account. It will be in the mix of the whole, it'll be in its own account for violation fees.
Okay. And that would be the same for sheriff's department if they issue tickets as well?
That would be a separate citation. Correct? That'd be a separate, that's a moving violation. That's different.
Okay. Okay. Right.
We have these letters go out. We may put them touch with, so they'll know who to write, how to write their checks or whatever.
Yeah. We've directed them to send it to the president.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. One, one last thing for you. I, I had spoken with Carla about this as well. On setbacks, it appears that there's some, um, Carla, help me out. What's the word? There's some discrepancy or argument over setbacks. And Carla, you mentioned that the setback is from any component of the solar, uh, project. And in your opinion, any component would be, that includes, that would include the fencing, correct?
Anything that's part of the CFS project.
Would that include cabling as well?
Anything that's there because it works over.
Would the cabling be outside of the fence or would it be inside the fence?
Well, at some point it has to be outside just for the connection, but then that would be through the right of way, which is like any other utility.
So the 150 setback would be from the underground cabling?
In regards to, oh, like what I had talked to you about, like panels not being 150 feedback. I, I believe that's a component. The electrical is how underground. I don't feel is part of the 150. It has to hit to the line somehow, but.
Okay. So.
Physical. That should be 150.
Okay. So now is that correct, VS? Are you?
Yeah. I think there's a, a conversation going on between your attorneys and lawyers on it. As you have a couple places in the ordinance that discuss fencing specifically. Um, and as Carla's pointed out before, and what is typically the case in most counties, generally go with strictest.
Mm-hmm.
If there's a, uh, you know, opposition within or, or, uh, consistency on zoning. So, um, they've stated their position on the fencing. Um, and I think probably if Jacob says yes, we're going with the stricter interpretation of this or whatever the case. So right now that's an ongoing between the two.
Well, okay.
Most of them have an electric component.
Yeah.
Essentially a sewer water easement, depends on the project.
Right. So, so if a property owner is concerned, if they're looking out and they're thinking, this is not 150 feet from the center of road or their, you know, property, can they give you a call and, or Carla?
Yeah.
To come out, I hate for an entire fence to get put up, and then it's discovered that they're 25 or 50 feet off.
And even with some of the silt fences, where we think they might be too close, usually installing those fences behind them, you've probably seen a few already, so it depends on if it's 10 feet off that silt fence, or 20 feet, depends, so we've let our inspector know, here are the ones we think are pretty close, and that's just based on eyeballing it, but then you have to go out and walk. So, before the fences start popping up, or identifying, hey, this is where we're on the edge, and you can almost visually see the difference, like, I, Carla and I were out measuring at the lay-down yards, you can tell eyeballing, way off or close, either way, you have to walk the measurement out, so.
Okay.
There's been identified areas, but if somebody did, they can contact us.
Okay, thank you.
Either through the website, or the email address, through the website, or just calling one of us, or if it gets to one of you.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we will entertain public comments, we ask that you state your name, address, ask that you please limit your comments to approximately two minutes, and we ask that you speak once. Any public comments at this time? Bing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Okay.